Open.
I didn't realize it was both of you.
May I have a motion for acceptance of the minutes for the committee meeting held on March 4th?
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
We are now on to PCR 26-24, resolution relative to bids. May I have a motion for acceptance of the minutes for the committee meeting held on March 4th?
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Bid 2024-385, street improvements.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Kristi Moretti, Public Works. Public Works is requesting to award the bid for street improvements to JR Venegro and T. Mayozi in the amount of $4 million for a one-year period expiring April 24th, 2025.
Thank you, Kristi. Are there any questions for this bid and members of this committee or comments? Councilman Gebhardt.
So these are two of the bidders that won last year, I think two out of the three, is that right?
Mayozi is, Venegro is new, but they just, from what I understand, assumed Cardy's assets.
I see, okay. And how did the paving program go this year?
It went well. We spent just under $5 million, $4,917,355.52.
Wow, okay, great. And so are you complete on the spending authority from last year's bid? The contract is running out.
Yeah, this is a new contract, so it's a new award with monies that we have allocated to us.
Okay, great. And do you anticipate the same kind of success on this bid of using almost all of it?
Yes.
Yeah?
We're gonna certainly try our hardest to get as much done as we can.
Okay, great. Any learnings from having the more than one vendor that go pretty well?
It's nice to have more than one vendor, simply because you can do, obviously, more than one area at a time. The only thing with, you know, vendors is we try to, or not we, I should say engineering, tries to give the vendors work where they bid lower. So if it was just a mill and overlay and, you know, one vendor's lower than another by $10 a ton, then they disperse the work that way.
Okay, got it. All right, great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Kristi, I have a quick question. So the bond that the, and I think I pretty much know the answer, but the bond that was approved some years ago for repaving, that's been utilized, obviously, we're, I know a lot of the roads that I'm driving on normally are now smooth. This is to continue on projects and areas that may have not had the opportunity to get repaired in the past?
Yeah, so we do have about $88,000 left in that infrastructure bond that you're referring to.
Thank you.
These funds are from ARPA, from the reimbursements from the gas company for the roads that they've disturbed, as well as the allocation that we received from DOT.
Perfect, thank you. And the other thing is, the, there were no, I'm using the wrong term as the councilman was talking. I was trying to remember, we had a problem with penny bids. There were no penny bids?
No, we don't accept penny bids.
Okay, thank you. We still don't, that's still the process, even though the company that had a habit is no longer on the bid list?
It is specifically written into that they may not be considered if they do that. And I haven't seen the last two bid cycles that we've had with this that we haven't had any penny bids.
Thank you. Questions from members of the council, Council President McAllister.
Thank you, good evening, Kristi.
Good evening.
No, I was pleased to see the multiple bidders. I know it's a little more, you know, sometimes with the payments and everything, having the multiple bidders, but as we have seen, you know, if we had just gone with one company, something could come up and then, you know, all our work gets delayed. So I think that's a really good precedent that we started a couple years ago, having multiple bidders. So if one company's working in some other part of the state, we can get the other one in there to do the work. And also, on the bond, this is how things have changed. I believe when we bonded that, it was like less than 1% interest when that came. Imagine if we could get that again today on that. So, no, I'm pleased that you had the number. Councilman Gebhardt kind of already asked a question I was asked about how much paving we did this year. I believe, you know, we've been hitting the roads and I think we've been paving more than ever before, so.
Yes, we certainly have.
Yep, so great work and to you and your team and keep up the good work, because we know this is what we hear, this is what we hear about. So, and then, once we get the roads paved, the next thing we'll hear about is speeding on the roads.
Yes, now they're paved, yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. President. Are there any of the questions, comments from members of this council? Councilman Lattisor.
Thank you, Chairman, hi Kristi.
Hello.
Kristi, I know Councilman Gebhardt asked a question about how much was done with the paving, but do you have a dollar amount as to what we spent on paving so far this year?
For this fiscal year? I don't have that. The $4,917,355.52 is from the period of invoices that were paid from January of '23 to December of '23.
So most of the budget that was approved has been used or will be used up by the end of this year, fiscal year?
We'll do our best to utilize whatever we can under the current contract and then we transfer to, as of April 25th, we have a new contract in place. So then we'll start drawing off the, if approved, with the $4 million that we're asking for.
And I will state that in the past, I was not always in favor of multiple vendors. Matter of fact, it was a period of time when I was against multiple vendors. Recently, I have been in favor of that for the obvious reasons, but particularly with this one. And you made a point in answering Councilman Gebhardt that you're able to do more paving with multiple vendors. And in this case, because the bids have come in so close between the two companies, I can see where you'd want to use them simultaneously to just keep pumping out that work. These bids are really close and, you know, I think that was a good job. So, once again, go to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Kristi. Next on the, oh, I apologize, yes, thank you. Are there any comments from members of the public? Comments, questions from members of the public? Thank you, Kristi. Next is bid 2024-080. This is HVAC services for city-owned buildings. Kristi, and I believe you did contact me and request an amendment.
I did. First of all, I'd like to amend the requested increase on this. We were requesting $70,000. I'd actually like to amend that another $15,000 for a total of $85,000.
Thank you. Okay, you wanted to open up with the statement?
Yes, so we have.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's why you told me earlier, I apologize. May I have an open PCR? That's okay. 27-24, thank you. So bid 2024-080 is now PCR 27-24. Kristi, I apologize, please continue.
That's quite all right. The reason we're requesting an additional $15,000 at this point is, on Friday, I received 10 invoices from this vendor. We had already had a couple that we were holding for payment because we needed to come before the council to make this request. And there are also two quotes that we have from this vendor for some work to be done. So, all told, it's around $50,000 for all of that, including the two quotes that we have, which is the reason why I'm asking for an additional $15,000 on top of the 70. This bid doesn't expire until August 29th this year and I'm sure air conditioning season is not going to be kind to us.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments from members of this committee? Are there any questions, comments for members of the council? Councilman Lattisor.
Thank you, Chairman. Kristi, you said that there's a couple of bids that you've just received that are a lot higher. What do you mean by?
No. No, I received, no, I received invoices. So we have invoices that we need to pay and two quotes for work that needs to be done.
So what is higher than what you anticipated?
Originally with this request, I requested $70,000. And I notified the Chair today that I was going to amend it on the floor to ask for $85,000. That was the increase.
No, I thought you had said that invoices or bids or something, they had increased from what they were in August?
No, this bid doesn't expire until August. So we're gonna still need services from this vendor until August 29th for any HVAC issues that we have. Right now, between the invoices that I have and the two quotes that I have, it's about $50,000. So that will essentially wipe out what I'm asking for this evening, which is why I asked for another $15,000.
So why are we so far off? Initially, you came to us for $80,000. We're six months into it and now you're looking for $5,000 more than we originally approved, more than double what the original budget was. Why is it so far off?
Well, we estimate what we think we might need in expenses for HVAC issues, but, you know, it's much like a car repair, you can't predict when something's gonna fail and you can't predict how badly it might fail. So, aside from the fact that this department is responsible for the nine fire stations, all the other city buildings, Pilgrim Senior Center, Police Station, this building, the ice rinks, the pool, I'm trying to think of what else. I actually think I put it in the letter. But, so we're responsible for a lot of infrastructure and some of it is aged. So, and we don't have an HVAC person on staff.
And what are the invoices and the bids or the quotes that you have now? What are they for?
They're for multiple buildings. I can read them off to you if, oh, the animal shelter. So Cooper Building, Animal Shelter, Station 2, Senior Center, Cooper, Fire Station 10, Fire Station 6, Police Station.
And these are all invoices or quotes for things that need to be done right now?
These are invoices for work that has been done, we need to pay them.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions, comments from members of the council? Councilman Ricks.
Thank you. Speaking more generally, and I understand you might not have these types of figures on the top of your head, and I suppose some of it's a matter of interpretation. When it comes to these types of maintenance and repairs, not just as to this particular item, but thinking about trends when it comes to repairs and maintenance, are we tending to spend more on maintenance and repairs than we tend to have budgeted for in the budget that was prepared for this fiscal year?
We have, no, we have not gone over budget in regards to, so the cap on the bid is separate from the budget itself. So we are not over budget, but we are exceeding the cap on the bid.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further questions, comments from members of this council? Questions, comments from members of the public? Questions, comments from members of the public? Thank you. We are now at the part of the bid package, oh, correction. May I have a motion on former bid 2024-080? That is now PCR 27-24 to amend?
Move favorable action on the amendment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion on PCR 27-24 as amended?
Move favorable action. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We are now at the part where I am going to ask members of this committee, members of the council, and members of the public, if there is any bid within the bid package they would like to identify to be discussed. I will begin while my colleagues look. I'd like to, per request of the department, bid 2024-010, found on page 25, HVAC services for Thayer Warburton Arenas. That is item number five. Thank you. Are there any items that members of this committee would like to?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Let's do number seven.
Roger. Councilman Gebhardt requests bid 2024-416, found on page 35. That is item number seven. It is purchase of 200 water pitchers and filters. Councilman Gebhardt requests item number 10, bid 2024-331, TPW Sleepy Hollow Tennis Courts Improvement. That is found on page 60. Thank you, Councilman. I will now move to my colleagues in the council. Are there any items that members of the council would like to pull for discussion? Councilman Lattisor.
Item number four, 2020-162, found on page 15.
Councilman Lattisor requests item number four, bid 2020-162, State of Rhode Island Facilities Maintenance and Repair and Operations Industrial Supplies, found on page 15. Yes, sir. Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you, Councilman. So we'll go in order as per usual, and we will start with item number four, bid 2020-162, State of Rhode Island Facilities Maintenance and Repair and Operations Industrial Supplies. This is found on page 15 in your bid package. Good evening, Kristi, welcome back.
Good evening. Kristi Moretti, Public Works.
Councilman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chairman, thank you, Kristi. Kristi, this is another item that the original request is, or this is almost 60% higher than your original budget request, and the same question goes to this. Why is this so far off?
It's, so this bid actually originated in 2019. So we've just been requesting to increase the cap as we need to, since the state has, it's a state bid. So we run concurrent with the state MPA expiration date. So last year, it was extended until June of '24. We requested an increase at that time, probably, I don't know if it says it here, last year, $40,000, which we haven't completely expended, but we're coming close. We're probably around, have about $6,000 left. So in order to get to the expiration for anything that any of the divisions might need, we're asking for another $25,000. But again, I know it's a $130,000 cap, but that started in 2019, so it's been five years.
And did you say with the, did you use the $40,000 increase last year?
We used probably all but about $6,000.
Okay. And you are asking for an additional $15,000 for three months?
It's 25.
25, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the 15 below. For three months?
Yes.
Because?
Well, we're coming into the season now where our tasks change. So we might have to buy certain equipment, shovels, rakes, you know, depending on how much they are, we get a preferential price through Granger. Just recently, we purchased, I mean, ARPA purchased for Councilman Foley and his ward, which was about $7,000. So a lot of, it's not, it's not just for, you know, the department needs, it's for other things as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Further questions from members of this committee? Questions, comments from members of the council? Questions, comments from members of the public? Thank you, Kristi. On the next item, it'll be item number five, bid 2024-010, HVAC services for Thayer Warburton Arenas. Kristi, you requested that I reserve this so it could be amended?
Yes, I'm gonna request an amendment on this one as well for an additional $15,000 in spending authority.
Thank you. May I have a PCR, please? Repeat, please? Thank you so much. So PCR 28-24 is formerly bid 2024-10010, correction, 2024-010. Thank you. Kristi?
The reason we're requesting is, I have, well, I had two invoices and then I received a third one at 3:30 this afternoon. So the total outstanding invoices we have with this vendor right now is $15,132.48. So with that being said, if I didn't request an amendment, then I would be back here on April 1st requesting another amendment, requesting another increase. So I'd like to increase it another $15,000, knowing that we still have service calls that we're gonna have to pay for. I actually had one this morning because the power went out last night. There was a power outage and unfortunately, the rink was part of that. So when that happens, we have to have our compressors turned back on by this company, just to ensure that everything, like, you know, if the compressor was running when the power went out, you know, there's a chance we could have lost refrigerant and it's a little complicated. But anyway, that's the reason we're asking for $30,000 instead of $50,000.
More proactive than reactive?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Are there any questions from members of this committee? Questions, comments from members of the council? Councilman Lattisor.
Thank you, Chairman. So Kristi, on your previous bid 2024-080, which you amended an additional $15,000 to 85, in your position paper, that included the Thayer Warburton Arenas and that 85,000.
It does only for, what this vendor does is specifically related to the compressor room at the ice arena. So they don't touch anything else. They don't touch any of our heaters, they don't touch any of our boilers, they don't do any of that. It's specifically to the compressor room.
So if I remember correctly, I think over the past eight months, nine months, maybe a year, we have put, I don't even remember the number, that we've put into these compressors and other components in that ice rink. And is it the same vendor over the past year or two that's been maintaining these items that we keep throwing all this money at? Is it still the same vendor?
Yes.
And are these new breakdowns or are these fixing the same breakdowns?
It's both, kind of. So when the refrigerant was, when those systems were retrofitted with refrigerant, the compressors that we have are not, I don't really know how I want to say this. It's not that they're not, they don't work as well as the original equipment that we had in there. We had R22, which obviously the EPA has phased out. So now we have R434A, which we can get, it's very expensive. That's what's in that system now, but the compressors have troubles skimming the oil off the refrigerant on the return. So with that, and there's a lot of, we've had leaks, you know, we've had pipes welded. We've had, this company, I have to say, I understand probably, you know, you're thinking we've put a lot of money into this, but they have literally kept us frozen when we shouldn't have been. I call them at midnight because I get a phone call and they come right out and do what they need to do. So some of it is, you know, there's overtime rates involved there too, weekends. Just last night, I called them and said, hey, our power's out, we're gonna need you to restart our compressors for us. And actually, it worked out better for us that they didn't come out. We just shut the compressors off and then they came out today on regular time. So, and that was their call. They said, you know, you'll be fine tonight, which I figured it was only gonna be a few hours, but rather than do it on overtime, they came out on regular time. So this company has been, in my perspective, they've been amazing to us as far as service and keeping our equipment running. It's 21 years old, so it's tired.
Well, yeah, it appears to me that for a long time now, we've been just throwing thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars at these compressors, at the refrigerants and whatever else is encompassing of that section of equipment to keep making ice. It's just difficult for me to comprehend why we keep throwing the amounts of monies at this thing that we are. Has anyone requested a complete overview of this equipment and what the cost would be to replace it once and be done with it? Because this type of system for doing these things, you know, fix it as it breaks and just keep throwing thousands and thousands of dollars at it, it's difficult for me to understand that. And then it becomes more difficult for me to understand how are we going to keep up with another ice rink if we can't keep up with this ice rink?
Well, I can't.
Has anyone asked for that type of inspection and review of that complete equipment?
So back when Mayor Pacozzi took over, took office, and we were having issues with that particular compressor room, he tasked Public Works with making sure it was going to run efficiently. So the company that was on contract at that time was not doing the city any favors. They were not doing preventative maintenance, they weren't doing a lot of things that they should have been doing. I asked this company to come in because they were familiar with our system from the day it was installed. They gave the whole thing an evaluation and yes, we did spend a lot of money fixing that as much as we could, but there was some level of neglect for a few years. And we're not finished yet, I can tell you that. There's still more for us to do, but the things that we'd like to do are more proactive than reactive. We just had to have a whole compressor replaced on the Thayer chiller because it literally imploded while it was running, which I can sure, as you imagine, it probably sent, which it very likely did, nothing detrimental, but sent pieces of metal through the system, which is never good. So, you know, they run independently, Thayer has their own chiller, Warburton has its own chiller, but at the end of the day, they're in the same room and they're twins. So as you can imagine, when something happens to one of them, you almost expect it to happen to the other. It's, I've got to be honest, I've had many late-night phone calls. I've had many nights where I've had to go to the rink because there's a problem. This is what we do. It's not, you know, it's not something that I look forward to either, but this is what we have to do to stay frozen.
No, I understand that and I can appreciate, you know, the effort that is being. being put into this. I can also appreciate the amount of monies that's going into it. Now, you said that prior to Mayor Pacozzi taking over, that the company that was servicing this unit had been, let's say, performing less than in an acceptable manner. How long had that been going on before somebody finally said, you know what, out the door?
I don't really know because at that time, it wasn't under the purview of Public Works.
It wasn't?
It was, no, it's, so it was, it was our responsibility up until.
Under Parks and Recs?
Up until it went to Parks and Recreation and then when Mayor Pacozzi took office, it came back to us. So I can't speak to the time where we didn't have the oversight of the facility. I can only tell you what we've done since we've had to take that over.
Fair enough. And did you ever get an estimate as to what it would cost to replace all of this stuff at one time instead of keep feeding more money into it and more money into it and more money into it? And by the way, over the last couple of years, as we know, the costs have increased significantly for doing these repairs. Did you ever get a number on that?
Not, nothing formal. We've had some discussions with the tech, we, there's one tech basically that's assigned to our facility. Usually when I call them up and say, you know, who I am and where I'm from, they say, okay, I'll call, you know, so-and-so because he knows the ins and outs of the facility. So I actually talked with him this morning even, and he said, you know, I'd love to get you guys on the system that's, you know, basically you just have to check it out and then in 10 years is when it's due for maintenance, he said, but it's millions and we just don't have, we don't have that kind of money. So we're doing what we can to make improvements for it to at least get us, I'm not really sure what kind of answer you're looking for. I don't, I don't have anything concrete to give you, but we're doing the best that we can to make sure that the facility stays operational. Unfortunately, I mean, we have a lot of people that depend on that for their recreational activities and tournaments and skating shows and public skate and all that stuff. So I, believe me, I've been, you know, I get the, the estimates and my jaw drops to the floor and I'm like, oh my God, here we go again, but.
Well, now you just made me think of something else because the, the COVID money, COVID money, it's intended for like a one-time thing, right? One-time, whatever it is, but it's a one-time. So perhaps it might be something for whomever to think about assigning some of the remaining COVID money to this ice rink and get that problem that you deal with, it seems like on a regular basis, done once and for all. Just, just a suggestion, I'm not looking for a comment or an answer, just a suggestion on a one-time influx of the remaining, a portion of the remaining COVID's money to fix this rascal once and for all before we go into another venue that could create other maintenance issues over time. Thank you, Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Christie. Are there any other questions, comments from members of the council? Or I apologize, member of this committee? Question, comments from members of the public? Thank you. May I have a motion? This is now PCR twenty-eight dash twenty-four. This is to increase the original bid from 15 to 30,000. May I have a motion to amend?
Motion for favorable action on amendment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion as amended?
Motion favorable action.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item we will discuss is item number seven. This is requested by Councilman Gebhardt. This is 2024-416, purchase of 200 water pitches and filters. This is found on page 35. Good evening, Director, please identify. And then Councilman Gebhardt, you have the floor.
Terry D. Petrillo, Chief of Water, good evening. So let me start off by saying, I made a slight mistake back in, I believe it was December. EPA mandated, mandated these water pitcher filters. It's going into law October 1st, 2024. We tried to get ahead of it, we've been ahead of this whole lead program for the past two years and a lot of communities in the state are using us because we're so far ahead of everybody. So my thought process was every water division, every water department in this country is going to be mandated by these, to buy these water pitches. So let's get it while we can get it. So we put out a bid for these water pitches. I brought it to the floor a little too quickly after I brought it to the floor and you guys voted on it and approved it. Then I sent the paperwork to the state and the state said, nope, this company does not meet your bid specs and we will not accept it. So we went back out the bid and Zero Water come back and I sent that information to the state and they approved that. So it has to remove lead. Once you touch a lead pipe, they require water filters. So we're requesting a 56-6 to purchase these water filters from Zero Water. Like I said, we originally watered this purchase under that last bid, but they were not approved. And, you know, we're asking to rescind that one. The Zero Water pitches are approved by the EPA in the Department of Health to reduce the, the lead content. This purchase is necessary to provide a vessel for safe drinking water to residents who still have lead connection at the street. These services will be changed over. There is mandate that from the EPA that requires this department to provide those services to this, to, for these filtered drinking water contaminants that may enter the water line when the service is replaced. Right now, we have a known 167 and maybe possibly 58 that we're still investigating. That being said, we're, we're in very good shape compared to other communities. Over the years, when I first started here 27 years ago, we had 800 to 1,000 services, but we've been, you know, being proactive over the years, replacing those on our own. But it's an issue wide mandate by EPA, so the water division requesting now to make this purchase. And these filters are actually cheaper than the, the Soma water filters that are denied. But in the meantime, this is not a law yet, this is just a recommendation. So the EPA changed, changing the rules daily and I might be back before you again when they change the law again. So now they required two extra cartridges to supply the homeowner with. So that's, so that's why the prices, so the last bid was for 6,500 and it's up to 80, 8,400 roughly. But that's because of the cartridges. So the pitches are cheaper, they're better, they're bigger, they're actually double the size for the homeowner. So when I say pitches, it's like a breaded pitcher, you fill it with water, it goes through the chocolate filter and it takes out the impurities.
You mentioned the 167 known connections and the potential 58, and then you talk about those being changed over. Is, is there a timeline for when that work will happen?
That bid should roll out this week and we got approved by the EPA to award it to multiple contractors to beat the deadline. If, so the EPA deadline is October 24th and then a whole bunch of others, other set of rules will follow if lead services ain't changed over. So two years ago, we were very proactive when the new law came out, we studied it, we did an audit of every suspected or known and we identified and we're in pretty good shape. It's going to be under 200, I don't think the LF 58 is going to be there, but we'll make sure. But we will, we are going to meet that mandate to save this city money and, you know, keep the residents safe, free from lead. Because as you know, we're going to be watching news, lead's a big thing, you know, since Flint, Michigan.
All right, got it. And how do these, how do the pitchers get distributed to the residents?
So when we go to your home, we will bring that pitcher with us, we will give you instructions and we'll tell you exactly, you know, what to do.
Oh, so this coincides with the replacement?
That's correct.
Got it. And there's no risk currently for the, for those residents who don't have these in place or the, it's?
Well, it's once you disturb the lead, so lead lying by itself, just like paint on a windowsill, it's, it's okay there, you know, you can't touch it, don't put it in your mouth, you know? So once you, once you disturb that lead, you know, during construction, impurity is going to break off and that's what we're trying to recapture. So we're going to put a new line in with the added addition of safety of these lead pitches where you can drink from.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilman. Questions from the committee? Questions from members of the council? Councilman Rix?
Thank you. Is it only residences that are being affected by this or are there also any commercial properties or municipal owned properties that are being affected?
So we identified some commercial properties, mostly on Post Road because the state is going to be repaving that. So instead of having contractors do those, we already completed those. So all the, all the commercial buildings are done. Now, this is just residences and it's mostly the north end, the northward area, your area, Patuxent area, Ward 1, the older part of the city.
And specifically, do the residents currently know, have they received any notification at this time?
Yeah, so they received notification probably about a year ago, year and a half ago to help them identify and we also put it on the website.
Director, if you could talk into the microphone.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
About a year and a half ago, every resident of a suspected or known lead service, they received a letter, they contacted us. We've made contact with every single resident. We gave them instructions on the website or over the phone on how to see if your service is lead. It's called a scratch test because most people are just looking at a plate, they don't know what it is. But if they had trouble identifying it, we made an appointment and we entered the homes and, you know, yes, so they have received and we have information on the website also.
Oh, good. And would you be able to, especially since it seems to be in areas that may in part overlap with Board Two, would you be able to email me a list of affected streets, more or less?
First thing in the morning.
Thank you. No further questions?
Thank you, Counselor. Any other further questions from members of the council? Councilman Lattisor?
Thank you, Chairman. Hi, Director. Councilman? Could you just point out on the, the water pitchers, because of the larger size that you're getting and there may be some other reasons, could you point out to everybody what the savings is that you've attained with those?
Yeah, so the savings is $2,700, but if, if you look at my packet, it looks like it's more expensive because that's because it kind of worked out well that we're doing this because in the meantime, when we rejected this bid, we read a new law that they're requiring not just pitches but replacement filters also. So the actual pitches itself were saving $2,700, but now it has increased to $4,600 for the, for contractors. So cartridges is actually more than the pitches themselves. So the total asking price is 83,9660.
But that increase was because the vendor we approved didn't meet specs?
No, it's because the EPA changed its, its goalpost again and like I said, we're going to be, I'm going to be back before you again because as this new law is rolling out by October, right now it's just, it's recommendations. So the federal government is, you know, always, you know, adding things on. So right now, you know, if, if we're awarded this 83,9660 to purchase the 200 filters and the 400 cartridges, we're meeting their requirements right now. So with that addition of the filters, so I could have came back to you tonight if the EPA didn't change their mandate, $6,500 for the Soma filters that weren't approved, without the cartridges, would have been $3,800 for the better filters, pitchers, but now adding that new law about the cartridges, that's why it comes out to 83,96.
But the original vendor, their items didn't meet the approval?
That's correct.
Which is why you had to get a new company?
Yeah, so I don't have to top off my head because there's a lot of codes and I think it's ANSI and NSAI 53 and 42. They met those requirements, but they did not meet the med, the lead requirement. Those filters do not remove lead.
And isn't the whole purpose of doing these things is because of lead?
Right, so we're not bid, it's, you know, filters to remove lead. We got the bid back, they said they did. I came to the floor, well, probably prematurely, you awarded it, I should have sent my recommendation to the state first. I did not. I just felt like I was on the gun, I just wanted to get this done. I did do my due diligence and have the state approve it so we're not spending money to waste. They denied it, we rejected the bid and we moved on to the next company.
Well, at least you caught it in time.
Correct.
And, you know, I would, I would think that if someone is bidding on this item and they know the purpose is to remove lead.
I agree.
It would meet that purpose. Also, I know we had a conversation earlier regarding the purchase order and you had indicated that purchase order has been canceled.
Correct, yes it has.
Nothing on our end.
We owe that company no money at all.
Thank you. I'm all set, Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any further questions, comments from members of this council? Other questions, comments from members of the public? Please identify the name when you have the microphone.
Sergeant James Torres, US Army retired, 4080 Post Road. I just have two questions. Has there been any like reported lead poisoning from these areas and like, how do we monitor that?
Director?
So there has been no lead poisonings, so we test water every single day for any impurities whatsoever. We have eight stations that we go to. We are heavily, heavily monitored by the Department of Health with our testing. So anything, anytime something comes up, the lab calls me, they call the state, the state will call me. There has been no problems with lead in the city of Warburg.
The second question is, you said that the announcement was made a year, a year and a half ago. Will there be a current announcement so the residents are still informed as a year and a half?
Director?
Yes, absolutely. So it was about two years ago when the EPA started making this new mandate, this new law, so we dove into it. And we've been very proactive with the residents because this, it's, it's serious and we've had a great response. We've, I think I've, we've talked to all 167 residences and we're going to get them, as this bid comes out and we hire contractors, we are going to, you know, make phone calls and set up dates that we're going to replace this service with the residences. And, you know, we have a whole template of, you know, what to do, what not to do, what to expect. And the city, the water department is going to, we're the only city right now that we are going to pick up the tab for every single homeowner, full restoration of property, whether it's from the water main right to your water meter or just from the water main to the curb stop or, or just from the curb stop right to the home. Our goal is to, you know, other communities gave out low interest loans. We don't, we don't really qualify for that because, you know, the low income communities do and they get them sued by the ACLU and we're just going to spend two and a half million dollars out of a water fund money and let's eradicate this, be done with it and keep everybody safe and we don't have to meet, after October 1st, 2024, we don't have to worry about the EPA's new mandates. We're, we're good.
So, so are you guys still going to make another announcement just to keep people informed?
Director? Absolutely, yep, absolutely. So as this program, as the bid goes out, I'm going to check with the administration and my bosses, you know, something in the beacon, also rescind the lead, once the, with the bids awarded, that we're going to start rolling, doing construction and hopefully end of April, May, we will send out other letters, another letter to the residents and saying, here we are, let's go, let's get it done.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Any other questions from members of the public?
Thank you.
Thank you. The final item on the bid packet today is item number 10. That was requested by Councilman Gebhardt. It is 2024-331 Sleepy Hollow Tennis Court Improvements. This is found on page 60. Councilman?
Should be a quick one. I saw, so there was just a typo in the last amount, so obviously we'll approve this very small adjustment. Any update on timing, when this might start?
Well, once we get this squared away, we can issue the purchase order. So once that happens, they'll, they'll coordinate with the vendor and we'll get going.
Got it, okay. All right, so this didn't hold up the purchase. All right, so this didn't hold up the purchase order for a little bit of time?
It did, just because there was a mistake on the resolution when it got approved. The numbers were backwards. So this, what we asked for in our letter was actually correct, but the numbers were transposed on the resolution. So in order to, it's just a housekeeping issue to correct it.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
And just for clarification, with the, from the conversation, no amendment is needed on this committee right now?
No.
You were speaking of the actual bid before us.
Yes, yes.
Right.
This is just a 612 to the, what was presented last time.
Understood. Thank you. Are there any questions from members of the committee? Questions from members of the council? Councilwoman Travis?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to put it on the record that the night I filled in for Bill Foley in the finance, I caught the mistake and I asked that we should correct it. I thought we should have corrected that night because we had everybody here. And I don't know why we had to hold it because now, look, we held up time and it didn't get done and was just a simple figuring out which one was right. I knew it was 850, 69, 850, but I just don't know why we didn't correct it that night. I just wanted to be put on the record.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from members of the council? Questions, comments from members of the public? Questions, comments from members of the public? May I have a motion? On PCR 26-24?
Move favorable action.
I have a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. The time is now 5:51 and the Finance Committee is closed.
The next committee to me is the Intergovernmental Committee and that can start at 6:20. So we will see you back here at 6:20.
It is now 6:22 and the Intergovernmental Committee is now in session. The first order of business is the acceptance of minutes from the committee meeting held on March 4th, 2024. Do we hear a motion?
Favorable action, second.
Have a favorable and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
The first item on the agenda is PCR 20-24, a resolution requesting the General Assembly to enact legislation exempting from taxation the real property and the tangible personal property of the Rhode Island Coalition Against Domestic Violence. Councilman Snappy?
Two quick things. One, Councilman Lattiser brought something to my attention after the last meeting. So I didn't realize at the time, he was not actually here when we discussed the prior resolution, the one that was for the Senate for mediation. So any comments in reference to our prior action? It should be noted that they do not apply to him because he, I wasn't here. So they should not be attributed to him in any way in that regard. The second thing is just a question of if we have a fiscal note for that? Because if so, we can discuss it. If not, it's basically automatically held still. I wasn't provided a fiscal note, but I don't know if we have one elsewise.
Any comments from the committee? Any comments or questions from the council? Councilman Lattiser?
Mr. Chairman, to speak to Councilman Snappy's comments, I have not received a fiscal note. That's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
Yeah, so if we don't have a fiscal note, it gets automatically held regardless of my desires on this one?
Okay, we will hold this until... Yes, Chief?
Evening, Chairman. Just a note on the fiscal note. Assessor Dupuy has been working with the Coalition as well as the property owner to receive certain information that he needs to produce that fiscal note. The property owner sent it over to the assessor today. So once he's had a chance to go through that information, he'll be able to provide the proper fiscal note.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Ricks?
That addressed my question. No further comment. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Okay. Do we have a motion to hold it?
So moved?
You think you would have it available to the next meeting?
April 1st?
Yeah.
April 1st.
Hold to April 1st. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The second item on the agenda is PCR 18-24, a resolution respectfully requesting the Rhode Island Board of Elections to review methods to enhance election fairness and security, including transparency in the certification of election ballots. Councilman Lattiser?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as probably all recall, during the last election, we had a serious error that took place with the ballot and it happened to involve me. It could have involved any one of us, it could have involved anyone at the General Assembly. So in any event, what occurred was the director in the Board of Canvases was the sole person who was overseeing these ballot items. There was at least three opportunities to catch an error, perhaps even four, where an individual pulled his walking papers but never turned in the signatures, didn't turn in one signature, let alone close to, or 50, never turned in any signatures. So with the sole approval of that one individual, this ballot showing this person or these documents showing this person as having qualified to be on the ballot was submitted to the state. The state received it, did whatever they had to do, sent it back to Warwick, which is normal procedure, with at least two other items that had to be confirmed regarding the qualifications of the people to be on the ballot. Once again, it was approved, signed off, and sent back to the state. Several days before the election, I think it was like three or four days before the election, it came to my attention that there was an opponent on the ballot in my ward. I had called the state immediately. They were not aware of it. It was confirmed. I notified right after that the Board of Canvases here. And that was in fact confirmed that this took place. I ended up having two meetings at the state Board of Elections regarding this matter. And during that first meeting, there was a lot of discussion. No one from the Board of Canvases here in Warwick attended that meeting. And the board was clearly and on the record upset with what took place and how that type of an error occurred. And they were certainly committed to do what's, what they could to correct that mistake at that time. So short of pulling the machines back in and changing everything around, that didn't seem to be an option. So there were notification things that had to be put in at the different polling locations, which there were three in my ward, and the election went forward. So fast forward to what we have here today. I'm asking for support on this resolution to send it to the state Board of Elections to ask them for, for their oversight and their direction in coming up with the checks and balances so this type of error doesn't occur again. So that only one person is not allowed to review the qualifications of a proposed candidate. So that more than just one person in that office, perhaps outside of the office as well, in addition to checks and balances that the state is already working on doing on their end to ensure that these type of errors on that. From what's my understanding is this isn't something that we here as a city council have control on and can do an ordinance requiring any type of that procedural aspect to the Board of Canvases. So it's something that needs to go to the state. So that's what it does. It's sending, sending this up to the state and asking for them to come up with the checks and balances, so to speak, so that type of error doesn't happen to any of you or anyone else in any of these election proceedings. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Thank you, Councilman. Any questions or comments from the committee? Questions or comments from the council? Councilman Ricks?
Thank you. It was, it was pretty shocking, I think, to all of us that that kind of error happened and that ballots were actually printed in that manner with that error, that nothing could be done about it at that point in time. Here, it wasn't of great consequence because our colleague was running, got opposed. But one can only imagine that if this were to happen in a race where there were two candidates and then a third candidate gets put on that general ballot and say that third candidate were to receive more votes, the difference between the votes of those other two candidates, there would be questions about the legitimacy of an election like that. Or other types of printing errors could happen too. Let's say that the wrong party affiliation was put down next to a candidate's name. There needs to be a check and balance to address any type of these kinds of concerns, whether that's a matter of having an additional person independently review this instead of, well, either a matter of someone rubber stamping without looking too closely, or a matter of somebody having a blind spot. I think we've all had that in life where we take a look at a document, we don't notice an obvious typo, and we just keep reading on. It's something very human, could happen very much innocently. But in any case, that's why with a document as important as the draft election ballots, perhaps the second person should be taking a look at these things, verifying all of that information before it actually goes to the printer and it's too late. There could be different processes here too. That's not really our job to go and tell the state exactly how to fix this problem. I think that it's very appropriate for us to formally bring this to that state level and tell them, this is a problem. We don't know exactly how to fix it. We can have some suggestions on how to fix it, but we're not going to tell you precisely what you must do. Your job is to figure out how to fix the problem. We just need to bring this problem to your attention formally and we can put some options out there too. Another option, aside from just having a second person in that particular office or second person independently reviewing it, is perhaps these draft ballots should go out to the general public well before they go out to the printer such that any member of the public could catch some of these typos, anyone with an interest in the elections, which really is all of us. One way or another, it's something that the state really needs to look into and address so that this sort of issue doesn't happen again. That's all. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may add, I neglected to, to say one other very important thing. With, with what occurred, it was also, it was also a grave injustice to the voters. And the voters, I think we, we all realize, voters, it's not the easiest thing in the world sometimes to get everyone out to the polls to vote for a whole lot of reasons. And I believe that at least one of those reasons is that the voters, they don't have all the faith and confidence in the process. And this type of a thing just further exasperates the issue. So, yeah, there's a whole lot of things. It's not just about someone being on the ballot against me or you, it's about what impact this has on, on the entire voting process. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you.
And I would invite anyone that would like to co-sponsor as well, please.
Okay, I'll add a co-sponsor. Okay. Did you get those? Two and six. Questions or comments from the public? Hear and then do I hear a motion?
Move favorable action?
Have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I couldn't see or hear everybody. Who were the co-sponsors?
Two and six.
Two of us, thank you.
It is now 6:37 and the Intergovernmental Committee is adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We will start the full city council meeting at 7:00 PM. There is public comment, so if anyone is interested, you can sign up at the podium for public comment, which will be at the beginning of the meeting, which starts at 7:00 PM. So we'll see everybody back here at 7 o'clock. I call the March 18th, 2024 City Council Meeting to order. The clerk will call the roll.
Mr. McAllister?
Here.
Mr. Foley?
Here.
Mr. Gephardt?
Here.
Mr. Lattiser?
Here.
Mr. McElroy?
Yeah.
Mr. Ricks?
Here.
Mr. Snappy?
Here.
Ms. Travis?
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you. Councilman Lattiser, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Singing) To the flag of United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbelied, with liberty and justice for all.
(Singing) Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright lights and bright stars threw the merrily spied? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the boughs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
We're now moved to General Communications. This is the announcements of congratulations, condolences, or community events. Just like to announce a couple of egg hunts that are coming up this weekend, on Saturday, March 23rd, from 11:00 to 2:00. Warwick Department of Parks and Recreation and the Tri-City Elks are having Egg Hunt at City Park. There will be a DJ there, they're gonna have a bouncy house, face painting, and photos with the Easter Bunny. So that is a nice event that'll be on Saturday from 11:00 to 2:00. And also on March 23rd, the Connecticut Village Association is also having an Egg Hunt for children under 10 years old, and that will be at Clay Fields. Are there any other announcements that council members have under General Communications? Councilman Lattiser?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So yesterday, my wife and I had the pleasure of taking our two granddaughters and my daughter and son-in-law to see the play Frozen at P-PAC. And it was just an amazing, amazing event. And I'll tell you, both of those little girls were at the end of their chairs the whole time, so it was really good. Saturday, my son, who is the manager of his engineering department at General Dynamics, invited me to attend the christening of the nuclear sub Idaho. And that was another, just an amazing event. The amount of people there was incredible, and there was everyone from a four-star admiral to a brand-new seaman. And after the ceremony was over, there was probably 500 or more people were moved into another building for appetizers and networking, socializing, that sort of thing. And I took notice that out of all of those people that were there, I only saw one Marine in uniform, and he was a brand-new second Louis, and he happened to be talking to a seaman. So I walked over to him, introduced myself, and I says, Lieutenant, I said, I don't see too many of us here. He says, I was just telling the sailor that. He says, I'm the only Marine, at least in uniform, in this room. And he says, Bingo, here you come over. I says, would you think that there's at least 250 sailors in this room? He says, oh, yeah. So I looked over at the young sailor and I says, sir, you know what that means? He says, what? I says, means the sides are just about even. It was a good time. He didn't get mad, and I didn't get beat up.
Thank you, councilman. Any other General Communications for members of the council? Councilman Howe?
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, when I was reading the news, it came up that throughout the state of Rhode Island, and I just want to openly recognize and thank Rhode Island's law enforcement, including Warwick Police, there were 61 DUI arrests over this weekend, this weekend alone. I think we're all aware of the challenges that they have, the specialized training they have to take. So from the holidays, Thanksgiving, Christmas, through to this holiday, which as a identified Irish heritage, it's unfortunate that that's the holiday that they choose to do this on, but so be it. But, you know, I have to commend the law enforcement throughout the state of Rhode Island, including our own Warwick, for that coordinated effort and doing their best to keep us safe from people driving under the influence. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Howe. Anything else under General Communications? Okay, next up on the agenda is Executive Communications. There are none. A is the acceptance of the minutes from the council meeting held on March 4th. Councilman Howe?
Favorable action.
Second by Councilman Foley. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Next up on the agenda is Public Comment. I do have the signup sheet here, the last call, if anybody here wants to sign up. Okay. Rule 41, after General Communications and prior to the consent calendar, at the last regularly scheduled meeting of the city council each month, there shall be a period of time not to exceed 30 minutes, during which citizens may comment about Warwick City government issues subject to the following stipulations. The total period of time for public comment shall not exceed 30 minutes. Comments need to be brief in order to allow as many citizens as possible to participate. Each citizen signed up and present shall have not to exceed five minutes to speak, provided, however, that if more than six citizens are signed up and present, the 30 minutes will be split evenly among speakers. Time shall not be transferable among speakers. The topics for comment shall be issues directly affecting city government. City council members will not respond to questions during public comment period. The public comment session will terminate at the expiration of the earlier of the speakers concluding their allotted time, or 30 minutes. Waiver of this provision requires a unanimous vote of the council. So again, last call? All right. This evening, we have five individuals that have signed up. The first individual is Michael D.
Jeremy, I'd like to give you my condolences again. Very sorry. I recently read that Councilman McAllister wants to run for mayor. Unfortunately, he doesn't fit the job description. My opinion, he's not transparent. He can't answer any questions asked of him. He's very rude to the constituents. He's constantly shutting people down, even Councilman Lattiser, constantly getting shut down with relevant questions. I've watched you open your mouth and insert your foot with the Costco deal. I've watched you get buddy-buddy with the mayor, all along knowing you were looking to take his job. The OJ sang a song about you called "Backstabbers." To close, I watch you sit up there at your desk. You consider yourself a king. I brought you the appropriate crown. Have a good day.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Cindy W.
Cindy Wilson, Mr. McAllister. So I would ask that when I'm speaking, if you guys would look at me and not talk to each other or look at your phones. I find it not very considerate when that happens, especially you, Mr. McAllister. So now it seems we have two choices for mayor, Mayor Pacozzi and Mr. McAllister. Mr. McAllister, big no. I suspected you were going to run when you started showing up at all the events with the mayor. And like Mike said, you were really backstabbing him, but you were there smiling and acting like you were buddies, and we all knew what was going on. And like Mike said, too, when you were at the Costco deal, you actually got on local television, like you were the mayor, and said, oh, yes, we love Costco. Well, they high-tailed it out so fast because they said they didn't want the media circus you were giving them. So thanks for that. You're nothing more than a cheerleader for the unions, speaking in favor of raises when we can't afford it, just a union suck-up. Voting in favor of two new schools that we don't need and we can't afford, just a union suck-up. Because of the attendance being down, we don't need the new schools. You never answer contract questions, always referring to the city solicitor. Again, a suck-up move so the unions won't get mad at you. You support waste and abuse, even though there are videos of city workers and of the fire department taking a ladder truck to coffee, which I've sent you personally, as well as the mayor. You do nothing about it. Why? Mayor suck-up, I'm sorry, union suck-up. The thing that really gets me is, and I wish Mr. Sakachi was here, because I can't believe that tomorrow, he's having a fundraiser with the governor to support you. I find that really incestuous, because you vote on things that he puts forth of the city council that are his direct clients as a lawyer. That just seems like it shouldn't be allowed. I'm kind of new to government, so I don't really know how that got passed, but that Now, I know, Mr. McAllister, you have immediate family that works for the city, so that would prohibit you from putting a kibosh on the unions, just like the mayor. And is all I ever see is you on TV, trying to get attention, trying to act like you're already the mayor. And I hope to God you don't get elected, but then again, we have our other choice, Mayor Pacozzi. Hmm. I mean, he's got someone running his Facebook page because he is unable to. If you listen to talk radio today, Dan York spent about an hour talking about what a moron he is. All he does is look at me. Look at me, having a cupcake with the seniors. Look at me at the senior center having a doughnut. Look at me, look at me, cutting the ribbon. Never anything positive, but look at me. In an article in the Warwick Beacon recently, he said he doesn't talk to lobbyists or special interest groups. He doesn't do favors, and they hate me for it. And he's been asked to join the club and asked to join the party. Anyone that expects me to kiss their ring can ask my mother. Is that how we want to be portrayed? Really, in the press? That's how we want our mayor to speak? I mean, this is not a playground fistfight between punks. So presented with these two choices, we are doomed. We need someone else to step up and represent us. But I don't know that we can. It doesn't seem like it's a very favorable position, being the cast of characters, because whoever stands up as Mr. Lattiser would be outnumbered.
You have one minute, Ms. Wilson.
So that's all I had to say. I have to say, I felt sick to my stomach all day, thinking about the two choices we have and the incredible task we have to find somebody else that would be worth the mayor position in this city. We are a great city, and Pacozzi's a joke, and you would be a second joke. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Roger C.
I just wanted to know if I can, before I speak, if you guys, if I can pass pictures out to you of the area that's in question? Or do I do that at the end?
Can you give them the pictures, Lee?
Well, I've been here before, and nothing was done in my neighborhood. I live in Arnold's Neck, and I was conferring back and forth with Mr. McAllister. He said he was gonna do this, he was gonna do that, he was gonna do this other thing. Nothing was done at all. Zero. No. I live next to Mary's Creek, like two minutes from Mary's Creek. It's a trash pit. You got pictures of picnic tables being thrown in there, trash. We got pictures of it, litter. They ruined the landscape of the beautiful road coming off Clyde, off the post road, Clyde going into the Mary's Creek. And they made part of the road a breakdown lane. They ruined all the grass, they ruined the beautiful terrain. People sit there, they park there, they leave their trash there, they have picnic chairs, they have drinks, everything imaginable. They're ruining this protected environment. They're ruining, the animals are there. And now when it's low tide, you can see all kinds of trash. There's a big plank in front of my house, just sits there. Who's responsible for taking care of that stuff? I've gone in there myself and taken a couple of things on my own. I don't even swim. So, and the traffic there, speeding like crazy, when you come around that corner from Clyde going down towards Mary's Creek, there's cars parked there on the side of the road, you can't get by, almost gone through a couple of accidents, you can't see. Mr. McAllister said, well, you know, we're gonna do this, gonna put parking signs there, this and that. Even under the bridge, under the bridge there coming off the Clyde, you can't even fit two cars under there, never mind two trucks are going through, there were boats. They're ruining the landscape of the road. It's just horrible. I had a police officer, we call the police officers all the time, one police officer totally agree with me. That road is so thin, you can't even have a car, you have to pull to the right if you're going to the south, you have to pull to the left, and it's, nothing's being done at all. It's just a horrible situation of a beautiful, one-time area. We're only asking for no parking signs, so they won't ruin the terrain any more than they're doing now. Speeding, they're blasting up and down that road. But I'm the one that's the bad guy, because I tell people to slow down. I walk up, people are walking, their dogs, their kids are in carriages, they're walking up and down those roads around Arnold's Neck. The roads are not big enough, people are, you know, flying out of the way, you know, so they won't get hit by a car. There's no speed bumps. I talked to a police officer, they said the speed bumps could be put in that area. I was told no.
You have one minute.
Can I get a drumroll? So, I can go on and on about this, but Mr. McAllister said he was gonna do this, he was gonna do that, he didn't do squat. Nothing, you did nothing, man. You led me a bunch of bull crap. I only dealt with two politicians in my whole life. They both sucked. Didn't do crap. They promised me something. I'm glad I'm not in your business, guys. I wouldn't want to be a councilman, I wouldn't be anything. I'm glad I'm in the music industry, I make people happy. You guys make people sad and pissed.
Thank you. Thank you. The next speaker is Lisa M.
Hi, I'm Lisa Macduff with Ward Seven. Okay, so I'm just gonna jump on what Mr. Cerisi said so eloquently. I have pictures as well of Mary's Creek and the degradation of Mary's Creek, which our illustrious council president is responsible for, Ward Seven, okay? Arnold's Neck is just a small portion of Ward Seven, and Mr. McAllister refuses to do anything about preserving the area, okay? We've gone back and forth with you many times, and you threw all this lip service, but as a result, nothing's been done. So, right now, I'm going, and what is your name, sir? Oh, okay, well, I have pictures, and I want you to see them. Okay, since our last conversation a couple of months ago, maybe October, few months ago, it's gotten worse, okay? There's now a picnic bench in Mary's Creek, okay? You want to see this? Some kind of a floating device in Mary's Creek. I'm not sure what this is, but it's some kind of platform in Mary's Creek, okay? And another piece of apparatus outside of my house at Mary's Creek. I brought this to your attention, and it's gotten worse. Next step is talk radio. All right? And, oh, someone was sleeping outside my house, okay? Don't you think I was afraid? My husband was working that night, and there was an individual sleeping outside of our house, in his pajamas. house in his pajamas. Somebody broke somebody's windshield just a couple of days before that, at my house, right across the street. I'm frightened, I'm scared, I'm upset. So, Mr. McAllister, if you can't manage a little part of Ward Seven, known as Arnold's Neck, which was once a pretty area, I've been there almost three decades, how will you manage a city, the second largest city in the state of Rhode Island with over 80,000 residents? How will you do that? That's what I want to know, okay? I'm not afraid of you or any of you. Let's see, what else? Roads are in disrepair in Arnold's Neck. Let's see, oh, and I wonder if you let the police chief know that I've been trying to get in touch with him, because he won't call me back. Did you tell him not to talk to me? Because he won't call me back, I've called about five times and talked to his secretary, he never calls me back. Let's see, what else is more I can talk about? Oh, yes, we've got the loitering of the bird watchers that feel that they can invade our neighborhood with trash, picnic baskets, chairs, beer, fast food, and leave it all over Mary's Creek, okay? Did you know that? Have you taken the time to come by? No, and who cleans it up? Roger and I do. So here's your ward, a small part of your ward. Why don't you clean it up before you try to clean up the city of Warwick?
You have one minute, Mrs. MacDuff.
No, I'm done. I want everyone to see these pictures. Who will take them? Who will take these pictures? I want the council to see those pictures. Oh, and yes, I sent out an email, I believe it was in November, with lots of pictures, not including those, this was before this, and you never got back to me, never. And I sent it to all of you as well, the email. No one got back to me, or the mayor.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rob C.
Rob Cody, Ward Seven. A few months ago, I asked this council to docket legislation to institute council rules of admonishment and removal of any council member that violates a resident's constitutional rights, as Councilwoman Travis did to me on July 18th. Since no legislation has been docketed and no discussion has taken place, I can only assume that this council condones the actions of Travis, which have resulted now in a federal lawsuit being filed against the city, of which the taxpayers will pay for. As of this date, there is no method in place that holds council members accountable to the oath of office that they take when they're sworn into office. And that in itself is shameful, in my opinion. Last week, Councilman McAllister told the Boston Globe that he's mulling over running for the mayor of Warwick. That's just what we need at this fiscal juncture in Warwick, another politician with no business background, no experience in the private sector, no finance background, and no understanding of contract negotiations. An individual for six years has been unable to answer any question posed to him relative to his knowledge of expenditures, contracts, and the city's fiscal well-being, only to state, "I'm here to listen, ask your questions to the administration." Mr. McAllister, the administration doesn't vote on contracts, you do, and you can't answer any questions. In the article, Mr. McAllister states that since all of our APRA money has been expended, Warwick will face some serious challenges. Let me take this opportunity to remind you, Mr. McAllister, that you championed every APRA expenditure that came before this council, having never asked a question as to the priorities of those expenditures. Let me also remind you, Mr. McAllister, that you pushed to move forward the Stage Two documents on the school construction. Unfortunately, if you had read them, you would have noticed the $74 million in errors contained in Section Four. But again, yet another document that you failed to read and comprehend. You're just not the level of intellectual that we need right now to straighten the ship in Warwick. Since being elected, Mr. McAllister has forgotten about his constituents and acts only as a cheerleader for the unions and the special interest groups. The only thing you're missing is pom-poms. We can be certain that you will continue to champion more raises, increased benefits for union employees, forgetting about the seniors in this community. With our healthcare unfunded liabilities approaching almost a half a billion dollars, we can be assured that Mr. McAllister will not make any difficult decisions to rein in these expenses because, much like the current mayor, several of his immediate family members are beneficiaries. In addition to these characteristics, which in my opinion disqualifies him from the corner office, Mr. McAllister voted in favor of instituting new council rules, which limit the public from speaking on expenditures and budget issues. Mr. McAllister has made it perfectly clear that he's not interested in the concerns of the general public, he's only concerned about his own agenda and his special interests. You know, on another note, for the past 20 years, our elected leaders in Warwick have done little to nothing to combat the unsustainable cost of free lifetime health cares and the expenditures that we're spending now in Warwick. Today, Warwick taxpayers pay over $25 million a year in healthcare costs for employees and retirees. In the last 20 years, we spend 45 cents of every new tax dollar on employee benefits. In private industry, any businesses operating under these guidelines would be out of business immediately. The unfunded OPEB liabilities have grown to over $400 million. Instead of proposing common sense measures to cut the cost of lifetime healthcare, Mayor Pacozzi and Council President McAllister, and most of this council, pushed through a measure that will cost taxpayers an additional $68 million over the next eight years. That means a total of almost $200 million will be paid by taxpayers in the next decade. That's enough money to finance one of these new high schools. In 2021, Bob Kushman was here, as you all will remember, and he questioned vigorously Finance Director Peter Schaefer and Mayor Pacozzi when they proposed their first budget. Mr. Schaefer testified that the city needed to get their financial books in order. Mr. Kushman asked multiple times, "What do you mean by that, Mr. Schaefer?" Mr. Schaefer and Mr. Pacozzi would not answer his questions. They knew that Mr. Kushman was on to their scheme that they would soon propose. Mr. Kushman described in detail to this council how the mayor would propose a plan that would result in hundreds of millions of dollars magically disappearing off our balance sheet. Today, I can report that the scheme worked. The new OPEB report is out. It shows a reduction in OPEB unfunded liabilities of $155 million. Think about that for a second. $155 million wiped off the city balance sheet by putting in little more than $400,000 into an OPEB savings account. The funded ratio for our OPEB account now is 0.17, less than 1/5 of 1%. If you tried to do this and then apply for a mortgage, you'd probably get arrested for fraud. This was nothing more than a gimmick, it's a Ponzi scheme that Bernie Madoff would be proud of, and it's doing nothing to reduce the tax liabilities to Warwick residents. This is why we need to elect new people into government that are willing to confront these problems with real solutions to reduce these costs so homeowners and senior citizens are not forced out of this city. Neither McAllister or Pacozzi have the skill set to do so.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is the consent calendar. First up is PCR 26-24, resolution relative to bids, committee report, finance.
Favorable action.
For action, Councilman Howe.
Move favorable action.
Second by Councilman Foley. Go ahead, Councilman Howe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bid 2024-385, bid 2025-019, bid 2020-162, bid 2025-020, 2024-416, 2024-257, 2023-431, and 2024-331. That concludes the PCR 26-24, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments that were not asked earlier this evening in committee? Okay, hearing none, the clerk will call a roll for favorable action. Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy? Ms. Travis? Nine yes, consent passes.
Thank you, consent calendar passes. I believe two items were taken off from the consent calendar, Councilman Howe?
Yes, Mr. President. The first was PCR 27-24, favorable action.
With an amendment, correct?
Yeah, with amendment, I apologize, yes, Mr. President.
Okay, so for action, Councilman Howe?
Favorable action.
We're second to amend on the amendment, and then you'll explain the amendment. Second by Councilman Foley, go ahead, Councilman Howe.
Thank you, Mr. President. It was requested by the department and approved by the committee to increase the spending authority to $15,000 from the original of $70,000 to $85,000.
Okay, any questions or comments on the amendment? Okay, hearing none, the clerk will call a roll for favorable action on the amendment.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt? Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser? Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy? Ms. Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes, two amend.
Thank you. Councilman Howe, would you like to move it as amended?
Move favorable as amended.
Second by Councilman Foley. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, the clerk will call a roll for favorable action as amended.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt? Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Ms. Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Thank you.
As amended.
The second item, Councilman Howe?
Thank you, Mr. President. Bid 2024-010 is now favorable action on PCR 28-24.
Do we have a second on that? Councilman Foley seconds that, go ahead, Councilman Howe.
Thank you, Mr. President. This also was amended at a request of the department to increase the spending authority from $15,000 to add another $15,000, therefore amending to a total of $30,000.
Okay, that is the amendment that's before us. Any questions or comments that were not asked earlier this evening in committee? Okay, hearing none, the clerk will call a roll for favorable action on the amendment.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt? Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy? Ms. Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes, two amend.
Thank you, the amendment passes. Councilman Howe?
Move favorable as amended.
Second by Councilman Foley. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, the clerk will call a roll for favorable action as amended.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt? Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser? Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy? Ms. Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes, favorable as amended.
Thank you, favorable as amended. We are now moving to unfinished business. First up is PCR 20-24, committee report, intergovernmental.
Hold till April 1st.
Hold till April 1st. We are now moving to new business. First up is PCR 18-24, committee report, intergovernmental.
Move favorable action, Mr. President.
For action, Councilman Lattiser.
Move favorable action on PCR 18-24.
Second by Councilwoman Travis and Councilman Ricks. Any questions or comments that were not asked earlier this evening? Hearing none, the clerk will call a roll for favorable action.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt? Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser? Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Ms. Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes, motion passes.
Thank you, motion passes. Congratulations, Councilman Lattiser, I know you put a lot of time and effort into this. Next up is unanimous consent. Ward one, anything to docket under unanimous consent?
Pass.
Ward two?
Pass.
Ward three?
Pass.
Ward four?
Pass.
Ward five?
Pass.
Ward six?
Pass.
Ward seven passes, ward eight? Ward nine? Councilwoman Travis?
If there be no further business for this honorable body, I move to a docket session.
All those in favor moving to the docket session, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any exceptions? We are in the docket session. I have one to docket, and I'm looking for cosponsors, and this is a resolution regarding litter-free Rhode Island. This is promoting community cleanups and educating students about the harm of litter. The governor is, Mrs. McKee is doing this initiative, and I'm looking to get cosponsors. And it looks like we have, the city council is going to cosponsor, so thank you. And what committee? Community Affairs. And the second item, we already have an item that's going to come up next meeting for community projects, APRA projects, so just a reminder to council members, if you have anything, there is some that's coming before us on April 1st, so if you want to get yours added in, please reach out to the solicitor this week. Ward one, anything to docket?
Pass.
Ward two?
Pass.
Ward three, pass. Ward four?
Pass.
Ward five?
Pass.
Ward six?
I have one, it's on behalf of Mayor Pacozzi, a resolution to the General Assembly supporting legislation to fully fund library grant aid.
Intergovernmental. Ward eight?
I have one, a resolution on behalf of Mayor Pacozzi, title being a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Community College of Rhode Island.
Is there any fiscal implication, Councilman?
It's regarding a receipt of estate grant. So yes.
Finance. Ward nine?
Pass.
All right, thank you very much, we are adjourned.